Oh, last past summer, the First Amendment. Um, I searched right up and down Main Street to go through Cameron's. And like one of the people started going through Main Street. On the corner of Main and Washington. Yeah, but they're taking their cameras and shoving them in. You know, ladies getting their hair done in there and. And people just, they're selling. And, and the. Yeah, and the thing, we just think they do. I think, I think some of the ladies wanted to go through and fill in the water and go out to the outdoors. At that scene.
We extended the date of the family actually to where the sure one person. Right, and I just did another push on. I just, I mean, that's.
I just think.
I can swing my arm around here, you know, if you're ready to do it.
I, I don't think it's, I think it's very, I, I think it's also very different with, with. When it comes to gender that's involved. Because I think women would be someone, especially guys, to be a gender difference. As much more respect, because we don't know if you're gonna go to the video. When you get it back to your dungeon. Yeah, yeah, exactly. It was like we're. Fire. Exactly. So that's, you know, I just had. This is not the way I'm doing. I, I understand this is the way that you might get the cops involved. Dude, this is not the way we do this. And maybe you should have made sure to go. Be, be, be our closing. I hear you. You know, years ago, when plans were making, running through all the movies, just funniest thing I ever. They were something so hairy. So there were these cars, just driving by, the baby was the meditator. Or I was, the, 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 I was stuck with him with the baby. I was a big role model, but I didn't play that. He's actually. I gotta go, so when you, I don't know, you stand on the corner, I have no idea. The funny thing about this is the plan that was needed at all that summer, and they announced in like August that they were gonna do another. Sunday afternoon. Anyway, we were all. W A D, you all, I've got to see you. They just turned the weather. It was like four ninety degrees. It was ninety-eight degrees that afternoon, and we said only two clan people are in. Both get out, they're running market or. Nobody in downtown knows this. So it's on the dude. And I think after that, they stopped. But then the baby, the meditator, the little bear, you can spread the internet. Oh, oh, yes, and they were. Well, you know, they're gonna smoke out on good little T P here, and so it's gonna be who knows their Bible better. It's after seven hours. And we're gonna see you. Cause I know the long way that way.
You working on it? Are you working on it?
Oh, it happens.
Let's face this way. Yeah. I hear you coming. Not bad. You're tough yourself. So when he said off my career, I'm like, yeah.
Well, are you? Okay. I got the word.
Oh, do you guys leave me out? Yes, I'm worried. There you have it. Yeah. The young guy. All those candy I rolled out there, like she has to dance. Always like.
Yeah, come on, okay. Yeah, how you doing? Good. Oh. Yeah, very.
I'm sure you're making a lot of decisions. Something else to the, I don't know, three, eight, nine, four. We didn't hear. I will. You're here.
Yeah, it's something. That's why I.
Yeah. Nice.
The United States of America, and two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with public comment before two minutes per speaker, ten minutes total. When I walked in, press goes on there, is there anybody else? Uh, Washington, Steve on the did item.
I'm gonna, I'll save mine until the end if you don't mind. Can we, are we gonna have a public comment at the end, or?
End of the year, last night at ten nine.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's see. I'm not sure that what you have would do in the end, so. So yeah, you can save it for the public comment. Somebody else? Okay, moving on, three whole minutes from the ten eighteen. Last one.
Making my shift for the minute. Um, October.
I also thank you on the end. And always a, I don't know what the day goes. I was thinking. I don't know.
October twenty-third.
Thank you, second. I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? Aye aye.
I'm looking for the special meeting, October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
I have a motion for the special meeting minutes from ten twenty-nine twenty-five, there's a second.
Second.
Got a motion on second, all in favor?
I'm saying I'm looking for it, okay?
Very same opinion. Want to take a motion to approve the claim.
Move to approve the claim, seven twenty-four. Through. Well, they.
Okay, got a motion to approve the claim, there's a second.
I'm second.
Second, all in favor? Aye aye. And now for the park department award, are you gonna take that, David?
Yeah, I'll, I'll head over. Um, so, when I first started in twenty twenty-one, uh, the rock field was just coming online, all projects were just coming online. I haven't had to turn any dirt yet or anything, or just ink was drying up the deal basically. Um, so I got to help manage this and shepherd it through with all the heavy lifting that has simply been done by Chad and you guys prior to my arrival, but. Um, now that it was all completed, um, it's been an application to AMH, which is the Association of Indian Internet Allies, um, there are two ones for our, uh, our, uh, demographic bodies. And so we won the, we won the state honor for that, that project, the rock field. And so this is the actual, um, trophy, if you will, that, that we got. Um, so Chad was able to come down and join me, um, at the Indian Conference in Great Lake on the twenty-second of October, and receive the prize on behalf of everybody here. So I just wanna put a special shout out to Chad and his group for getting that park going, and everybody else in town, and helping obviously. Is accountable for, you know, uh, getting the shepherd of the whole project, so. I just wanna make this very, it's a, it's a big honor, I just wanna make sure everybody got, got a chance to say something. And I wish, yeah, very much, Larry, that they would be here today.
Yeah, and there's certainly a lot of people that aren't represented today that weren't part of that, and a lot of people that aren't here today that continue to be a part of it, so very nice to know. What it's become for the town, certainly is drawing a lot of people into the community for, you know, very, very good reasons, and pretty exciting to see where it's going and where it's growing. So thank you, Jeff, and you and your team for making the platform. Certainly Cindy and I weren't on the council at the time, so.
I go out there and watch.
Yeah, me too.
For people out there.
Much appreciated, and job well done by everybody, especially those that, um, put the. The filing together for the awards, so thank you. Good work, Jim. Moving on to the resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight. Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight.
Well, five. Don't think we need that.
In, in the interest of disclosure, I prepared a resolution for you, which involved a potential gift of property to Habitat for Humanity. I was not involved in any discussions regarding the logic of this, but I want you to know that until. Last week, I was on the board of Habitat. And so I wanted to disclose that, you, I serve as their attorney, obviously I'm serving as your attorney, I just thought it fair to mention that, put it on the record.
I appreciate that.
I, I was supposed to say I'm not motion.
Got a motion in the second? All in favor?
That is quite a, then Logan is director of Habitat, is here, so.
Well, don't let me get in the way. No, but thank you for that, um, certainly appreciate, obviously the town's, your support and all things housing, so, uh, thanks, David, for bringing this together.
Yeah. Can I get your phone number, I mean, not like how long, but.
Yeah, sure, thanks. I'll write it down, first.
Do you have a card?
I'll get something to you.
Larry, I'll just probably email.
Then I'll. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, order twenty-five, additional preparation. You wanna take this one?
This is just a, a transfer from General Fund to the national fund for the fifty dollars in, fifty four dollars in the name of. Up to the transfer, reverse back to the three families.
Okay. Discussion on that? Want to take a motion for the order twenty twenty-five, that's.
Now move to approve the order twenty twenty-five, that's true.
Aye. Got a motion in the second?
Looking like, could we even treat that?
Yeah.
Move that motion in the second.
Yeah. Got a motion, second, all in favor? Aye. We all, new employee handbook changes, David, I'll let you take that.
Alright, so we've for a while now, I've been discussing if amendment, um, updates to the employee handbook, um, they kind of passed around between staff and, and council, um. Kind of, I've come out, there's nothing else needed added, so I created a, basically, uh, final graph, final graph at least, of, of the possible changes, um. The only ones that still need some attention from council, that we don't have anything filed to put on the paper yet, um, is whether you want to provide standby time for utility employees. And whether you wanna reimburse the mobile home use. The rest of my beliefs have all been talked through and decided upon.
Reimburse to?
For mobile phone usage for all employees.
Um, was that in our package, those updates?
Should've been. I, I emailed them today once or twice, and I said update to Virginia, or she didn't update that.
It's been in previous emails.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the email.
Yeah, I don't believe it.
If you feel with. Last time, you guys should be able to look into the legality of pay to phone call time, like, yeah, no.
I think Jay did research into that. Per one call time?
Yeah.
So Larry's asking what the legal standard is in your opinion.
Yeah, I gotta look at it. In fact, flash one's replaced.
Well, in reference to compensating, uh, workers for using their own phone, uh, while they're on the job to communicate with each other, um, it's very important, you know, that, that they have those phones with them, they can call each other, um, contact any other employee, especially the guys who work outside in utilities. So, uh, we're asking, uh, we were asking about fifteen dollars a month per employee, uh, the same as the sheriff's department receives, don't they, fifteen?
Yeah, we do.
Fifteen dollars a month, and, uh, I just wanna stick my two cents in there and say it's.
Is that somebody's in a hand up there, or is that?
It's currently in the hand of the police department.
I think what Bill's talking about, I mean, it's in the police department SOP, right, cause Bill's talking about.
It's not their SOP. It's not their SOP, it's in the actual employee handbook where it's sold out.
Okay, it's not in the SOP.
Where, where is the most, does it all operate places or something like this?
Jim? Yeah.
Yeah, that's, you can have it here, you can have it.
Yeah, I. You know, originally, I thought there was a difference between what the police department and, or, or why, I got clarification where it doesn't seem like that's the case. I really think that the reality is that if we don't do something like this, and people don't want to use their personal phone, and we can't really force them to, nor should we. And for us to put something else in place is probably not cost effective in comparison, so. And I know people don't like carrying two cell phones, I wouldn't like to carry two, so. I think in my, from my perspective, I think that it makes some sense, although I do feel like. In this day and age that everybody using their phones or whatever, I mean, it doesn't really cost you anymore, so I do feel like it's something that. Maybe isn't prudent for anybody, but at the same time, you're asking somebody to use some for work, and maybe it helps, so. I'm kinda on the thin post way, but I don't, I don't know that there'd be more cost effective alternatives than I think there would be.
David, how many people are we talking about?
Hmm, we got pretty. Out of those.
I think we came up with a figure of fifty-seven hundred dollars a year with it.
I did, I did find a date reference, or you know about the one called, or the, uh, am I trying to, I don't know if you, what that is for. Okay.
Um, yeah, just comment a point. I feel like you, and I don't, I mean, Bill, I, you've talked to him, I guess, like, I'm not quite sure, why would people wanna carry two phones when they could use their own? I mean, why not just give them fifteen dollars?
Yeah, a lot of people say.
I mean, just carry two phones.
Communication is important for the street people, street people, you gotta work outside, and, and between the different departments and so forth, especially the bridge and et cetera, so, and, uh. I think this is a small token of our appreciation for the work we do.
Okay. And move that fifty-seven hundred for the year. I'll make that motion that we, uh. I did fifty-seven hundred.
Well, it's fifty, fifty, fifty hundred dollars for a phone, right, definitely, it's.
What's that?
Fifteen hundred dollar, fifteen dollar per phone per month, or?
Yeah, forty-five every three months.
So, yeah, so we'll just, I don't, I don't know if that number is exactly right, but I'd rather do it by.
Oh.
By employee, rather than, than, than the number, so I can.
Fifteen dollars, if I wanna start managing it first, January, you know. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so when we can get these two questions answered, we can bring the whole thing back, do you have the sender for files, or will that, or January first?
Yeah, okay, that's, that's gonna be integrated, we have to handle that. So, I don't understand, but they're both. Wasn't too bad.
So the on-call, uh, basically go back, but generally speaking, you don't have to stay in for on-call time if you don't wish to do so. But if you oppose restrictions at the geographical limits for some time, I'd expect that is available, as would be availability by phone, so. I, I, I see what you mean, that if we lock them into their, surrounding home environment, they're probably disparate compensations somewhere.
Yeah, the easiest way to summarize that is that on-call by itself doesn't mean anything necessarily, if you're, if they're still able to be at the extreme of, you have to do what I want, you're gonna have to pay. If they're kind of a, well, no, there are a lot of things I can't do because of what I have to be on-call, then you gotta pay. And that can be a bunch of actors, but a lot of it has to tie geographic restrictions and, uh, expected response time.
So do we have those things in place, or like they have to be?
Sure, so currently on the weekends, there's one employee assigned some water, wastewater come in to testing operations, so normally, and they get paid minimum two hours for coming in, um, but they're not on-call. To come in at any other time, just to do the, the normal responsibilities, so currently, we don't have anything like that set up.
So, so do we have people on-call, or we don't have?
We do not currently, they're not taken to no call, they're just an employee assigned each Saturday and Sunday to come in and do the normal thing. And then if we have some sort of emergency, you know, it starts with me or Mark, and Mark makes calls to whoever, and then they find which, like, no forms or whatever, they find whichever employee is available.
So we really don't have that on-call?
Correct, yeah, correct.
But if, if they have to come in and we pay them.
Right, we're paying overtime, and then we'll spend them with two hours overtime when they come in.
So the reason they did that was because there was no on-call. So they did, so if they came in for a half hour, they still got paid for two hours. So if they got paid, so if they worked more than two hours, like, let's say they worked three hours, and they just paid for three hours. So if you just come in to punch, you know, like, a six hour or whatever, and they only need to attend that, so they're just paying two dollars. I mean, two, two hours. So that was, that was, that was one of the things, so then you're gonna have to figure out, do you want to, since are you doing that, or do you wanna do, um, um?
On-call gets a lot more complicated, doesn't it?
Okay, and the early daily time that we can do that's normal thing is, is we do answer like whether they're coming in or someone, certain number of plays are put on, and then on-call status, so that they were available. And by time this is something to chat, or. Or whatever.
Well, okay, so Jay, how do we compensate for that, or do we have?
I, A, I'm telling you, I don't, really don't think I would change the system I have right now, but B, when, it's just like anything else, somebody has to work an extra five hours, well, when they gotta work an extra five hours that weekend, you pay them that, you may have to pay them time and half depending on.
Right, I get that. Which is what we're doing now.
Yeah.
But what about the on-call part?
Yeah, so, yeah, the question is, do we wanna establish a system or is that?
Nobody's on-call right now, except what he's describing.
Okay, well, what he's saying is we might.
Well, there's, there's potential to start that program where if we like, you know, it's still for coming in.
But then, uh, but, yeah, you know, there's.
Yeah, we lock them in, that, that, yeah, that was just the only question that came up in conversation with supervisors, was do we want to establish something like that, that's where, that's where it's kind of the hanging.
The big thing is really no time.
Correct. Which is a big thought.
Out of the book.
Like, that's what we're fine, but it was just something that was brought up for discussion. Alright, so then, those are the only two that need to get any more council attention, so we'll get this, draft it up, and, and it's really, really exciting, you know.
So that one's on-call, going away, you know, make an amendment for some. Alright, is that true?
Nope, we gotta do the, the.
Um, I don't know, my bad, where did he, where did he finalize?
Yeah, I've, I've emailed that to you recently. But if you wanna, if you wanna visit in December, that's fine, do any time, but I can, I can figure it out.
No, I didn't do that. You know, I wonder if we can. You know, with some of these email frames, they're so deep, I can't find it.
Okay.
I mean, I just wonder how many weeks ago before we started?
New, new topic, new, new.
It's on my phone, I'll never find it.
I think this was, I, I consider they can, if you're in December, or whatever.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yes, but.
Especially if you're attached to it, I'll never find it.
We'll keep all that until December. Now, we'll move on to transcripts from the CUP.
Yes, all right, thanks, the CUP, uh, I'm here to, uh, give an update and, sort of, about the, uh, CAPS project, the, uh, community admitting program, uh, project for the town of Syracuse. Uh, I'm here in, uh, in place of Amy Rowe, which you're familiar with, the county, she has obligations. I'm working in partnership with her in helping to lift some of the grant applications, uh, throughout the whole county as we work through this program. Uh, so, um, I just kind of update on where the county is and how the program is working right now, um, uh, as, I, first of all, is everyone familiar with the CAPS program, uh, the, the community admitting program that the, uh, county receives funding from, uh, the state? I can give you a brief overview if you need, if you need that. Um, but then, um, the idea is that each of our small towns are getting, uh, up to five hundred thousand dollars, uh, with a fifty-fifty match for a community admitting project, and so the town is committed, uh, for the, uh, trail boardwalk, um, project in, in town to, um, complete that secondary, to kind of extend your, your connections within the community. And, um, uh, there, and so the next step is kind of giving that finalized application. I know that this funding, uh, has, um, various local batch, as well as the ready fund, different pieces there, so, uh, the committee that is in charge of the CAPS funds, is, is, I want to make sure that all the towns are getting aligned, getting those, those projects in, in due. Um, uh, our mission is to get all those applications in by the summer of this year, and so, um, just kind of checking with the town, make sure that, uh, that project is being made, and, and I'm like, David, just want to make sure that, uh, the council is aware of where the project is, and get any questions about, uh, that project, that program, and kind of the next step, I can answer the questions now.
Is there actually a, a date final, summer doesn't seem?
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, the end of June, uh, twenty twenty-sixth, uh, we need that.
June thirtieth, oh, like a fiscal or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, that's when all the applications are, they have to be committed to, to the committee. Um, uh, they, they'd love to see them before then, obviously, and so, uh, and, and I'm working currently, uh, with, uh, I think I've pulled ten different other applications across the county that I'm currently working in as well, so we're trying to schedule things, also make sure that we're gonna hit all our deadlines and get that in. Um, uh, they have to make sure that, uh, project's going in once, and, and get approved, obviously, then we have to move to the next step of construction, get those money spent, the goal of that is to just be done by the end of the fall of the year, twenty twenty-seven.
Are you saying that maximum is the five hundred, so you would contribute, or the grant would contribute to our fifty thousand?
No, so it, it's give, uh, five hundred thousand, and then you match, uh, five hundred thousand a week. Um, so that, that's a max you can do, so if you have a million dollar project, you can max that out, or over a million, obviously, this one is over a million, um, you have other funds in there to help with that process. I'm sorry?
Who approves?
Uh, so you, you have the town council approve, uh, submitting, uh, so you've already committed a letter of interest.
Yeah, I wanted to.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's the committee?
Yeah, but is it, that's pretty much of an automatic approval?
Yeah, so you, uh, once it's gotten past the letter of interest, so we've got the committee, uh, reviewed that, that this project meets the goal, uh, there, uh, the application just confirms that, um, that you have all of the funding, kind of, stacked, uh, lined up, you have a proper timeline, and then that you provided the appropriate evidence that you're meeting the goals of this program. Uh, it's, it's not competitive necessarily, since each town is earmarked to have this fund available. Uh, the only thing is if you don't miss, if you miss that deadline, that, uh, opens up for the whole county for other nonprofits and other entities to down the key for those funds.
Okay, so, does that match have to be cash match, or can we have other grants that help match?
Grants, other grants also, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't all have to be from your local, local fund, other.
Half a million dollars out of our budget's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's not, uh, the other grants can match, matches as well from, uh, community foundations, or, uh, state grants, et cetera, that, that are sources.
When do, when do we have to have our funding?
Yeah, uh.
Is this a project that can be planned and then built five years forward?
Yeah, they have to be, uh, the money is, is to be used in, uh, twenty twenty-seven, uh, is for that, that year. So, five it ends this calendar year, you know, this next calendar year, you'll, that, need to make sure that project is actually moving forward, towards construction, if you will, uh, have a timeline for that fund.
Moving forward towards, or?
Forward, actually, yeah, uh, so the funds need to be spent in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, I believe there is a little, there's a little rate, they said it's not a hard deadline, we have a substantial completion port in twenty twenty-seven.
Can it be more than one project?
Um, they are asking, right now, primarily one project for each community, um, uh, in there, uh, just a key big winner from that, and then there's a possibility that if there's still funds available in the county, so there's an option to reapplying for, uh, in the next year as well.
Yeah, I mean, Warsaw have a lot easier time to live, what happened?
Uh, well, so Warsaw and Winona Lake are not eligible for this program, uh, because they're, they're receiving funds from the, uh, it's the orthopedic industry, intention funds, they're receiving some funds, some possible money, so this is all four, uh, towns outside of Warsaw and Winona Lake.
What is the finalization process for that application?
Yeah, so it's a pretty simple application, just, um, uh, you have to provide information about the project, uh, that you're, and, uh, whether you need a runaway or engineering, or, or any completed, it's provided detailed budget, uh, and then, uh, documentation on your other funding sources.
Does this include, I mean, can this be applied towards engineering, or that has?
Uh, so you can use your local funds towards engineering, uh, but not, not the, the CAPS fund, but it can be used as the match towards their funds, so.
It was, it's project, is there a definition of what the project has to be, or?
Yeah, so it's the community admitting, and, and again, I think the town's already committed, um, the, the L O I, the letter of interest for a project, so right now, we're kind of flocking to that project, uh, unless there was any need to change that at this point, so that's kind of, that's good, which is that trail project that you're looking at right now, so, um, but it's, uh, the, it's pretty broad in what you could fund.
Okay, Jameson, David, did you have something on this topic, or?
I just, um, you know, knowing Craig, uh, representative Snow, he was instrumental in giving thirty million, uh, to the county. Uh, and he wanted to carve off five million for fall, you know, like, because that's really important for, uh, our companies that want to invest in employees, workforce of, of the caliber that are, they've got maybe a higher level of training and qualification. That's an amenity that's really been proven throughout the state, and that's one of the things he wanted to do for the county, to make sure that that opportunity was made available for the, you know, that our smaller communities, not just focused on Warsaw or Warsaw. So, I was just talking to him today about it, and I thought I'd stop in and at least, I, I heard it was gonna be on the agenda, so I thought I'd stop in at least endorse it, and. I might be on it for, I think it's a really good deal, um, and there's a lot of big questions being asked about, um, you know, details of their applications and the project, the sculpted project, and my understanding is it's gonna be like a boardwalk trail, uh, is, is that, if I'm correct in that, I don't know if I asked that question to you, but, um, it's part of the trail system, and I know that from, uh, the prior review of the state, so it's got a lot of support. Um, and it's a fifty-fifty match, um, don't know what your local funds are or anything like that, but I can't comment on that, I can just comment across what we're trying to do on a broader scale, and it's not just Warsaw, it's statewide, but that thirty million dollars was really unusual, I can tell you right now, when you've got that money, I told myself, you do that. And, and, and I just tapped three and a half million for a project, too, and everybody's asking me how I'd get, get that money, and there are ways, when you look at the road to close, incredible, super road to close, so do I. So, uh, that's, I guess what I'm saying, it's an opportunity that doesn't pop up right now when you have budget cuts in the state, and that's tripling down to, uh, what you're finding out, what's in parts two of the state, well, and then also the S D one. A lot of questions on S D one right now, and, uh, you know, for any concerns that might have with the board, I can tell you right now, talking with the chairman, uh, there's gonna be work done, and discussion, um, I don't know the details, though, I know one of the concerns that came up was lit dollars, uh, being capped like they are, and communities and units of government that have, you know, they have obligations on bonds, and they need to, gotta be made, so. That's, I think that's gonna be addressed, if that's any questions. But, you know, they're not, they're not really revealing that yet, it'll be a build off soon, I'm sure, but, uh, I know that's been dropped to all of our attentions from south, east, west, north, and south, I mean, it's, everybody's had that concern, so we've cut our attention. But this is an opportunity that really blew my mind, that, that was, at this point in time, that money was given out last year, when we already had the forecast for the downturn, and of course, forecasts may not be really as bad as we thought, but just saying, uh, we released those dollars at that time, and, uh, but it's an opportunity that doesn't come along every day. If that's something you can rent, I was highly supportive, but, uh, that's not my decision, I'm just here to, give you a little fair assumption, and, you know, I know those, those bring tourists, and I, we put trails in our town, uh, Rome City, I'm amazed that only people are using that now, and now we've got a nice game shop go up, along the trail, and they're trying to develop some things in Rome City, uh, for the trail people, and working in now, we've got an extension up, kind of tied into the pumpkin vine, but this is a network, it's, it's kind of the baby steps of a statewide network.
David, first of all, I'd like to thank you for showing up tonight, uh, second of all.
I came straight from the state house, I don't use a, no, 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 no.
Hey, um, you were, um, a couple years ago, you sponsored the bill for, for non-contiguous, are you willing to do that again for us?
Um, actually, I had conversations with me a while back, and, and I think, I can't answer that directly, I, I know there was some pushback on that, but the reasons that, that, but I had a bill, we, we're gonna, sure, we're gonna work with the state on it, and we've done it in other places in the state, and non-contiguous, and usually state road nine, it was one of the, uh, legislative holiday they did, and we, we defined it real narrowly by population thresholds, um, so really basically that's what it keeps in camp.
Yeah, well, we haven't done years ago for our tech parks, which is non-contiguous, but if we could do it for housing, too, that would be.
It could be done, I know we, uh, we're, we get done, but because there was some, I think there was some, um, a lot of questions brought up between the county and the city, and, and, uh, residential, uh, specifically, that, uh, I think there was more work that needs to be done. Uh, I'm still willing to do that, I think it's a great project, and, and we're finding out right now that, uh, just to do that, or preview of what we're trying to do, I'm working with governor on this, and we're trying to bring, uh, semi-conductor ship manufacturing in, I made a trip over to Taiwan, brought a delegation back to the governor, and he's on board, and, uh, there's, they're, they're looking for land, I already talked, uh, um, maybe Friday about it, and she's looking at the Warsaw area, but I wondered, if we could bring it in, I'd like to bring it in to Kocia, actual county. A lot, not just the ship manufacturing, but supply chain.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, there's some opportunities that housing would really be necessary, and if you can bring it up here, I, I totally support that.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I spoke with him Friday, and, um, I mean, with weight, I mean, the people, employees, they hope that we have an outlet source.
Yeah.
And with the current laws, the way they stand, there's not a lot of solutions, you know, we can get, and, I mean, we, we can do not continuous education, or place based online, if they want to, or, you know, uh, that industrial park, if we could add housing stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't comment on what the development.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just, I'm selling you on it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm. I mean, I'm very interested in, in development like this, because the potential is great, I was, I was, we were on a resolution between Quebec and, and Indiana. I was up there in Quebec, and we're, we're kind of negotiating some trade back and forth, even with tariffs, that, um, part of Indiana could work, uh, number two export to Quebec.
Well, that's a hilarious statement, I mean, if we're gonna bring in more employers, and we're gonna have more employees, and housing is already a, a shortage, so something that needs to be done along with that at the same time, possibly.
Well, I need somebody that, you know, has five hundred more jobs, or we gotta put them.
Well, the next, uh, I met with the builders, and we had some conversations in some of the conferences about the cost of building, so much of it in regulation, uh, the cost of materials, especially with Canada, after the saltwood, and she's probably well aware.
Yeah.
I, I was told, I reached Christ's medium-sized home of a new, new house, which admittedly included over four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I still find it hard to believe that, but they kind of broke it down a little bit, and I think it was like thirty-seven percent of it was regulation costs, permitting and all that, and, and a big chunk of it was labor, materials, too. That, I know, is something that the builders, uh, Rick Ross, uh, he's the president of the builders, so I'd be talking to him, that's really one of their goals, is to reduce some of these regulations, they're trying to reduce costs altogether, you get down to that price range, so you don't have to be average forty years old to buy a house, and, and, you know, federally, they're trying to do.
I think that's the new statistic, is the, the average age for the first home buyer is forty years or less.
Yeah.
He's talking, he's talking nationwide, four hundred dollars a level?
Nationwide, yeah, yeah, that's, you gotta.
How really?
Not New York.
Dave, we, we can do it, if we can do non-contiguous education for housing, we can develop housing here.
All right, I can go on, on that, um.
Well, let, let's stay in touch on it, then, so let's stay in touch on that.
Okay, if that's something you want to do this year, we have to do it pretty fast.
Yeah, that's what I was hitting up right now.
All I gotta do is drop a bill, I don't have to have the details in until, like, the second week of January.
Then do we start to get through, um, box committee, and?
Uh, not necessarily.
Okay.
That, that depends on Senator Buck, but, um, we, we work with Craig Snow and Chris May, the chairman of the local government, and we have, and we call it Christmas tree, and you can't find a place, but.
Yeah, Snowville, right?
Hmm?
That's Snowville, yeah.
So, I think there's a, we, we have a little, a decent hold there, but, um, I'm willing to sit down publicly if that's what you want to do.
I think so, don't we? Dave, Paul?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so that's what we want to do?
Well, we got a language, we're drafting. Maybe I'll do the, the polls, I'll draft out and send some copies to you, and, and I really appreciate your comments on that, so that I can take it to, uh, Craig and, uh, Mr. and some of these guys, about that, and Ryan Mitchell was very interested in it last time, um, as a matter of fact, uh, he was actively, um, campaigning for it with Senator Buck, so.
For our, our non-contiguous education?
And when you say non-contiguous, we were talking about having a strip along nine.
Or, yeah, so we can use thirteen.
Yeah, 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 that was exactly what we were planning, um, we defined the limit.
All, all they had is another report, I think, Queen, I don't think it's, Queen County just has, has, has been out there.
I think, I think the need for housing is, is outweighing the, we have to, to be non-contiguous, because it was designed for a reason, so we don't just start freaking out farther and farther into the next county, but now we're finding that we're in a critical mass stage of, of, of lack of housing, let alone workforce.
I mean, if we need to have to sell, like, new housing.
Uh, it works out.
Okay, sure, all right, all right. Let's stay in touch whenever we need to, if you still have money, you want to.
Yeah, I can drop, I'll, I'll just send around, send to, who else wants, I'd send it to everybody, yeah.
It's great if you did.
If I just have emails, I can do a math email, and.
I'll, I'll get it to you there.
Okay. But I'd like to have, take from what we have, and, and review and bring it up to shape.
David, since you brought up S D one, I, I'd like some clarity on that, because it's been pretty disruptive for small, you know, municipalities like Syracuse, and the fact that we don't have a lot of clarity, and it's so impactful, makes it challenging, when we have projects like this where the state's giving funds to their local community, and we just gotta match them, but we don't know what our revenue streams are gonna look like. So, to me, it seems a little counterintuitive and a little bit, um, chaotic, really, I mean, where, what, what was the?
It reminds me a lot of Affordable Care Act, here's four thousand pages, you don't need to read it, just vote for it, I mean, what, what happens with that?
Well, if you take it, break it down, it's not as complicated as it seems, there's a lot of legal, you know, references, code references, and, like, you know, something that doesn't need to be in there, but, um, Senator One, I mean, to the town, the big thing is the list, you know, we're tapping that, you know, and we're, we're taking our depreciation up to sixty-seven percent, doing whatever, there's a doubt that was good.
Syracuse, we might, we might lose the ability to set our, what, dollars?
What, sir?
Four hundred, thirty-five hundred people, we have lose the ability to set our limit.
Yeah, it was, it was, the county was determining that.
Yeah, and we could, sharing for other dollars as well.
'Cause if the maximum's two point nine percent, doesn't matter how you select it. I mean, it's, um, one point two for cities over thirty-five hundred, under thirty-five hundred, then it would be-
Up to the county.
Up to the county, right, it's pretty simple.
Um, for, cool, I think-
Now, that may change, I don't, because one of the things we're gonna look at for this, how will this calculate it?
It's just that we can't plan it, not knowing if it's gonna change or not. Right now, the way it sits is gonna change. You know, I mean, we have millions of dollars in our other funds that we may not have anymore. We can do a lot with the other funds. Um, you know, we keep utility rate down, we're using that fund for, you know, uh, wastewater and, uh, water finance improvement. So, I mean, there's a lot of things, it's hard. I mean, some people wanna put new interest lines above them to town, and it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Can we do that or keep two employees? Or, you know, we don't know, right? I mean, so it's really hard to plan and decide any of those things. You know, I spoke with an attorney, uh, less than a week ago, we just, for attorney, we're following this stuff really closely. And he's indicating that some smaller communities last to unincorporate. This is all back into whatever the next, uh, reverse of township for the county. Cause we're just having to look for it to operate it in this kind of like, the way that it stands right now.
Yeah.
And we guess that a lot of work has to be done, but it leaves us in a big problem.
Yeah. And you heard, you, your concerns are a lot of the clearer. I can tell you all throughout the state, I've, we're all getting beaten up over it. And it's one of these things that, you know, you almost can't vote no on it for the rest of the bill. But this bill was in the best interest of trying to offset the, the increase of such value. Based on such value, unfortunately, but, um, to, you know, to think on case, you know, that had to be based on market value and, and all that, but, um, they were trying to offset that. I had my line, which it got in there was over sixty-five, that's what I was thinking. And I finally got the chairman to put it in. But, you know, that was a little twist that wouldn't have a big, uh, fiscal impact. This, when you're a hundred percent in the full, full going deal, could give property tax relief, mainly to residential property owners and, and business, you know, depreciation flow and-
But the, but the max is only three hundred dollars, right? The max property tax relief is only three hundred dollars, right?
That's a credit. That's a credit, you'll get, uh, up to three hundred, ten percent up to three hundred. But, uh, you're also gonna see over, I think, about eight years. Six, seven, eight years, I forget how many years it, but it's going to change them. Now, what is it now, thirty-three?
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, up to sixty-six or something.
It's gonna go to sixty-six, but your, your flat, forty, forty-five thousand will go away slowly. It'll, it'll be like this. And then what we'll end up doing is, I can show you the numbers. It's supposed to be, I think, I think they said two-thirds at least, two-thirds of the property owners are gonna see a deduction in their taxes in twenty-six. And then as you transition through that increased deduction, offset, um, I think the higher-priced properties, don't quote me on this, but I believe the higher-priced properties are probably going to gain more than lower-priced properties.
Yeah, that's already been, that's, that's true.
So it's, it's, it's raising a lot of questions within the legislature. And I know that there's, there is going to be some action taken on it and, and those are the concerns we're hearing. I'm, I'm just speaking for Dave Abbott right now and, and knowing, uh, Travis Holdman, Senator Holden, um, they're probably hearing the same thing and I've had conversations like that and they know there's work to be done. What, I think they're gonna try to press the property owners and much of it, you know, but there's gotta be some consideration for what this does for the local unit. That's what I'm hearing.
I'm not picking on you, I'm not being, I'm just, everybody needs to hear what we have to say.
Yeah. I think the only thing I'd like to tell you is there's very good experience taken and, you know, probably be focused on holding there, there's no way to complain, this is from the local unit. I hear it's from the schoolers too, but not near, like, I hear it from all cities in town, mainly the town, because of thirty-five hundred. That's, uh, a lot of people worry, you know, Rome City is the same thing, myself, the manager, and she's worried about it too, you know? What's that gonna do like now? And some people thought it was double dipping, that everybody could get one point two, you know? It has total two point nine, and it'll be a cut-off. And, um, there's a lot of confusion, even a lot of states got way out of Portland. She's not, that can be stacked up and, you know, it's, 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 it's going down there, talking to the fiscal people in the state. And I said, no, you're correct, and it's very hard to learn, because that's one part of the problem with the bill is, it's, it's, it can be determined in different ways, but I think in the end, there's, we have to address some of the most, the main things that are really staring us in the face right now, that's the local.
Well, I, I mean, I think that it's important that everybody knows that you've been very helpful and open, you know, your posture towards us as a town, your willingness to work with us, and I think that that's very commendable. I also think it's important that people understand that changes and the stuff that's associated with S B one that hits us as local government, not our control. And there's not a lot that we can do about it. We're in a reactive posture based on what the legislature has done. And, you know, people have concerns and they need, they need to reach out to you and your office and their local reps, you know, state representatives, if you heard, because our hands are kinda tied, residency or whatever you guys decided for.
Well, I, I'll offer that, get any question answered. I mean, if I don't know the answer, I'll go to the people that created it. And there's, there's, I know there are people who are very, very smart, qualified people that crunch all the numbers. Um, I can't remember the one's name, he's a walking computer. And he can tell me in just spit out in just a few minutes what it does to every single thing, unattended at all. So, you know, I can get your answers, your gas and the technical answers, uh, specific parts of the bill. If you have questions, just reach out to me and I'll, I'll be connected.
Yeah, I know, I know you've been very receptive. It's been great to work with you, we really appreciate it.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, you're successful.
Thank you.
This is a tough one.
Probably there are, but-
Yeah, we're gonna get one out.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna head out.
Yeah, well, thanks, David, one of the ones, I'm not holding you long.
Here was the wrong yard.
Thank you all for doing anything, David.
Uh, moving on, general funds project, project.
Yeah, that's basically what David was here for. In, in the afternoon, if you have any questions, um, how you wanna proceed with those or not? Um, I, kind of meeting with Bill today, we kinda went over some, some ideas and thoughts and, uh, kinda like a contingency conversation before you guys, or your position, have to make some further decisions. Like, there's a lot of unknowns. Um, you know, none of this is, none of this, we've, we've got time, the cap people, a few months, um, before we have to really make the hard, hard calls, but just wanna keep the conversation going and have more conversations with you guys and try to get your questions answered.
I think that's at least mine, and it sounds like several of the others. Concern is that we might have, have the money, but should we be spending it when we don't know what the future is?
Yeah, and when we, you know, when we had a conversation a month ago, you guys approved the six million dollars. And I was also holding three million dollars back to reserve. So, um, you know, we already set three million aside to not test. And then you opened up, you know, the avenue to use six million of it. So, um, one point five was approved in current, but it's for next year. Um, so, you know, if next year you can make a difference in our creations, if you decide to move that needle a little bit, and that gets, you know, um, so we don't have to have a decision yet, but I, you know, I personally wanna keep the cap people aware of what we're doing.
Yeah, I would, would wanna add to, uh, getting local, uh, budgets are impacted as well. Uh, when I look at the state's grants right now, uh, for federal state grants, uh, when you talk about funding trails, uh, it's huge challenges right now. There's not a lot in the federal level going down the trail. State plan has been really restricted, uh, with the elimination of the, uh, um, the, uh, next level trail, uh, program and things like that. So, right now, uh, right now, the ability to have five hundred thousand dollars of grant funds to pay for a trail is pretty, uh, big with to get right now. So, you're not, uh, I know there's all, a lot of competing interests here, but I would say from the grant side of things, I, I will kinda deal with, uh, it is a good opportunity right now to, to advance some trail work. That in the next couple of years, we're probably gonna see another large influx, uh, from a, uh, trail funding standpoint.
Does it all?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're the community, we're the town, but does it have to be set in town or can it extend out into our community?
Uh, yeah, I, I believe it can, go, I mean, go out community. The county is also, uh, applying for, and then, uh, the, um, Syracuse always sees trails and also interested in, and they, uh, funding their trail extension. Uh, right now, the cap committee, because, because they're not in, in a municipality and the county has another project there, so they, they are putting them on a hold until they know the status of all the other projects. Uh, so they'll likely not give an answer until after the summer, uh, once they, all the other projects are in, um.
Yeah, I prefer it's a first, and I'm not suggesting this, it's just as an example. I know the Northwestern is interested in riding a trailway to the middle school.
Yep.
And I mean, it would make sense if sooner or later we do the same thing, but that's not in town.
Correct, yeah, and those are, uh, definitely an option, uh, they're at, at this point too.
I mean, that's a, that's a, the answer would be in the town.
Yep, yep, and, and, uh-
The county would have to sponsor the project?
The county would have to, the county parks department would be the main sponsor of, of that, which is a possibility. On those, the challenge is that we're not at a stage to have engineering, far enough complete, probably to have those funds available to spend the next few years, um, in many of the states, and so that's, that's kind of a challenge.
Those, those will have to-
On those things, but yeah, but, but there's definitely opportunities for other projects being done with these funding, uh, as well. And, uh, but-
Under our authority, or you'd have to partner with the county?
You'd probably have to partner with the county, um, if that's the case. But again, if, if, that's only if you decide not to move over with, with this project. Right, uh, right now, that's, that's tied up those funds, right, it's kinda in that reserved slot. So we have to release that and find other projects. Uh, with that, you would have the ability to do that. Uh, but again, that, that still has that June twenty twenty-six deadline that's kicking in, um, just for that, so, yep. So, just wanna make sure that you understand that, uh, from the grant side, that there's, there's a really good opportunity for, uh, trail development, uh, again, if you, uh, in the next few years, we may not be something, uh, like this, uh, going down, coming back down, so.
So, David, to answer your question, and I know that when Bill talked earlier about you had made your recommendation or felt like it might be more to, to have a work session to discuss these projects, kind of more focused. Um, I would be in favor of that, I think that that would be good. Because I think that we, this is David said, I mean, that S B one stuff is pretty fluid. Um, I think that there was a lot of things that they did that turned out to be a little bit maybe over. No, um, but we can't continue to this standstill, and we've gotta move forward. And, and what does that look like and what is prudent? And I think that that really could require some deliberative type, um, conversation to give the best opportunity for Syracuse to grow going forward. We clearly need housing, we also need to do things that make people want to live here, um, beyond three months a year. So, I would be in favor of that. We couldn't talk, you know, set the time up, but just kinda wanted to get everybody's feeling on, uh, work session on these types of projects.
Well, I would reiterate the importance of it, uh, having talked with each of you individually and David also, uh, obviously, we all have some different ideas, some we agree on, et cetera, et cetera. But we want to get anything accomplished unless we sit down in a work session, and I am this out. I'd like to shoot for the first week of December, if that's at all possible, before the holidays get in the way.
We can speculate some time, but I think that would be-
Yeah, I mean, check your schedules and know what, I, I'm free all the time, so.
Hey, there's a question on it. Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Commonwealth Engineering Report.
Thank you. Sorry, I was a few minutes late. Train at three, uh, zero fifteen and US six is not holding everybody up. So I apologize for that.
Right. Um- Your, that's your time slot, you're good.
Um, generally, you should refer to the report, uh, David did the copy, I'll get a copy of it. I will attempt to answer any questions you might have on it, um, you know, if you have any questions, I'll try to. Thank you, I guess.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
No, I didn't. I know it's been a very busy time, there's a lot of stuff going on and everything, which is great, you know, it's great for speed. And we're, uh, uh, we're glad to be part of the community, to help the guys and stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. The department report, is David, you get to filter it?
Uh, well, other than my report, uh, we've already covered everything that I, that we've talked about. So, um, have any questions on my report? That, well, I have, so.
One of the things we talked about at the certification committee was this two hundred and fifty, uh, two hundred and fifty. And, um, we talked about staying in place, but they need, they need getting together with, I can't remember who it was, I don't know. Getting together with other people in our community, like Chautauqua and Chamber and military situation. You know, with everybody, you know, and, you know, anything, oh, I understand, yeah.
David, is there anything that you're aware of overarching that is that?
So the-
Did I give a national idea?
The county is working on a, um, community event, S B program. Um, I think they'll invite a participant if they can or will. Um, and I think it's the week before, before, if I remember it. Uh, and our conversation has been to focus on that thing again, because of course, it's just so busy, everybody's already got plans. Um, and I'm very proud of you, you know? Um, so, you know, our thoughts are trying to host something on Main Street, uh, maybe close, closing it from about, um, the top, like, down around to the community center and just hosting a community event of some sort that we're still fleshing out what that might look like. Um, but that's kind of where we're, I think, is our thought. And then we, in our last meeting, we, we had this conversation, so maybe we should have a, a meeting with some other interested parties who, in the community that might also be thinking of hosting or doing some event. Just so that, like, they were all coordinated, they were not stepping on each other's, and competing with each other. So that's kind of where we're at, is our thought, not so certain.
Well, and I think that it's worth considering that all this stuff takes a lot of work. So if there are people in the community that are interested, or other community organizations that might not be the obvious ones that wanna participate, then they can probably contact you, I think.
Right, right. Yeah, we'll put out, uh, a message pretty soon, that we'll set up a couple of opportunities to have a, a setting that they can have a meeting with representatives from different organizations. They kinda put our heads together and, and coordinate some things, so.
Yeah, we're all in, like, uh, seven months.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be on top of us before we know it, so we gotta get some things moving for sure.
Okay.
Well, just one thing, you know, if, if there's something on the agenda, and you've initially given my information three months ago, if it's on the agenda for, just for me, can we make sure that all the documentation required is in the pack?
Yep, absolutely.
The object for it?
Not a problem.
All right, team length.
Yeah, definitely my report, we, uh, have any questions?
Moving on.
All right, and we do not have any immediate complaints this special.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, the situation, we have the-
Do you have fire warm?
Yeah, there's a-
The firearm, he's like, he had to go, but you guys-
I've got a crew right here, I'll try to-
All right. Public work, that's not here.
He didn't have anything to pass on.
Okay. Well, since you guys are here, sorry, department.
Any questions on our report? Uh, if not, I would like to thank, thank you, this council for working with our department for, since I've been chief for the last twenty-four years, this will be the last meeting that I'll be at this council. Uh, I'd like to introduce my successor, Deputy Chief Quinn Huddle, be my successor. So we're gonna meet with this gentleman. So please, support him if he's trying to do what's best for our department.
Thank you for all your service, man, really, this is gonna be your last meeting. Thanks for making that announcement.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, what have you got to do with your time now?
Uh, whatever.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, you're welcome, more to that, more to that. The Virginia, you're trying.
Um, would the council want to have a year-end meeting?
No.
Also, I know in September, I go to the end of the rate increase, and you, um, would you want to increase for outside users? It would be what we, um, what we charge the residents for a thousand gallons, which is around twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, add, uh, to ten and fifteen percent of the house for not said users. Because currently, we only charge them nine dollars and seventeen cents.
I thought we agreed we were going, trying to do that before.
We were going to discuss that at, at the, yeah. I love the Murray with the.
We currently do have outside users, right?
Yeah.
And what do they bill that?
Less than the town rent.
Yeah, less than the town rent.
Less than the town rent, that's why.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. So, I, I'm certainly in favor of charging an outside user the town rate plus fifteen percent.
I would too, I would very, oh, I got motion.
Well, you, there, you have to jump through to get to that point, we're drafting ordinance for that, if we got an idea that that's what we want to do, then we can draft one and have it ready.
Also, we also discussed in September, um, outside users like Macy's condos, baby, kids in lanes. What would you guys want to do with that? Because currently, we charge them the same as our current residents.
Why would we?
Right, I'd agree the same, if you're an outside user, you're an outside user.
Yeah.
Now, that should be a blanket policy, I believe.
I know before they came first, when Pollard first, that they used to charge Macy's condo an upcharge, but then, from what Tim said, uh, Pollard came in there and says, we are no longer upcharging them, and that was from the council. So, I don't know what happened or whatever, how.
I don't remember that, I remember there, the legislature changed the law of what we could charge, so maybe they were charging more than them with fifteen percent upcharge, and maybe they had to undo that, I, I don't know, but I don't, I don't, I would have never voted. Less than that charge, no.
Uh, yeah, I would have, but after she said that, after my office, just why are we charging Macy's condo or baby more money? She said, well, Pollard told me to speak it off, I'm like.
Yeah, there was, the, the state changed the law, it changed how out of municipality could be charged for water. Yeah, they made it like fifteen percent unless you look up the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission and get some kind of approval, and I don't think anyone's done that. Um, there was a law, and I mean, I had a long conversations with the, the utilities attorneys at Alcar, and they quit extending utilities out of town because it's kind of spilt for the financial reason, so they, they started requiring everybody to be annexed before they got to the utilities because of that limitation. There were companies that they, um, really charged substantially more than the state. And so, maybe it should respond to that law.
Yeah, I, I don't know. So what would you guys, would you guys want to upcharge Macy's?
Yeah, yeah.
No, you can't just show up charged.
What kind of?
They're, they're gonna consider an ordinance for that effect, and you're gonna get an answer to that when they pass that in November.
Yeah.
You don't have to do anything, so.
When you write this.
Ah, my God.
The town rate, whatever that is, resident rate plus fifteen percent, but I'm hearing that everybody thinks it's a good idea.
This also would include, um, outside vendors who come and buy water from us, correct?
Yeah, so that was the whole, that was the whole thing that I looked at, I'm like, why are we only charging them nine dollars and seventeen cents for over like three thousand gallons? But our residents, we're charging them twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, doesn't make sense.
So what hydrates?
Are you sure they're twenty-four dollars with that cap?
Yeah.
What, what's the rule?
It's twenty-two ninety-three, so like seven dollars, about sixty-one.
In your thousands?
So we charge the residents zero to a thousand gallons, twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, and outside users, um, for a thousand dollars, we only charge them nineteen dollars and seventeen cents, and then the higher they get, the lower the, the rate is. So if they get seventeen thousand five hundred gallons, the rate goes down to eight thousand five hundred. So it maybe doesn't make sense.
See, the only other thing, thing that to think of is, a lot of times when, uh, we hired the company to do the rate studies, maybe they do, or something, and we didn't know.
Well, I did, I did talk to, um, Mr. Reynolds from, uh, London Witty, because they're the ones that did this, and he said, yeah, they can go ahead and upcharge, the town's can go ahead and upcharge it to fifteen percent, that's where, you know, that's why, after I talked to him, I talked to you guys, and, and he had all the pretty galas.
I mean, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna add up much, however.
Right, it won't, but.
Why should they be paying less or saying that everybody in town is paying the, the taxes and everything with your voice, you know, the, so.
What happens in the winter when people leave their condos and go, go away for three to four months? I know, you're still, you're still built, right?
Well, there's zero to a thousand gallons.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't see that.
So what, um.
Nothing else for you.
I will come up to the floor, Brett's still here, so he wants to talk. I won't, I, I won't keep you very long at all, I, I just, uh, it's refreshing to hear the dialogue you have with this gentleman who sat in front of me. Uh, it's refreshing to hear that you are, uh, forward-thinking and looking, um, I hope that will include some entryway signs as you do your work session. Um, there are some pros and cons to what we have versus what we'd like, um, you know, I, I left my office this evening to grab a sandwich before the meeting at five thirty, and it was pitch black, and so our entryway signs aren't working for us tonight, unfortunately, because they're not lit up. Um, they also offer, uh, branding, uh, that's probably twentieth century, not twenty-first century, so, uh, you talk about quality of life and, and housing and bringing people to Syracuse, and so, that's all part of it, it's all part of it, so continue to do the good job you're doing and thinking forwardly and, and, uh, continuing to make good improvements, so, good growth, smart growth, that's what we, we want to see, the chamber supports that.
So, so, can we ask Rob?
Well, I'm talking about the two entryway signs down in the middle school and the one up here by travel, uh, travel, uh, light RV.
Oh, no, our, our acres, right?
Yeah, the, the one there just south of the dynamic landscaping, that, that's backlit, so that works, but, the ones that, the newer one that we re, uh, installed up here, um, that's not lit, and the one by the middle school is not lit. So those are the ones working for us about nine hours, uh, right now in beautiful northern Indiana, it's winter time.
You know, so, the only thing is, we've heard that representative Abbot said, I mean, we're, we face some financial constraints, that if, if the chamber supports this, I mean, for us, it's, it's not like this is a good idea or not, it's, uh, how to get paid for it. Would the chamber be willing to do some fundraising that actually supports it?
Um, I can't, I take it to the board and see what they decide on that.
Yeah, see if they could support it.
Yeah.
Certainly the one by the middle school, well out of town.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, you know, the numbers that have been provided, I mean, I'm, I'm convinced we can build very nice sites for much less than, you know, a hundred twenty-five grand, and we, I'm, I'm certain, so I think that there's room to do something that'd be nice, but the, like many things in this area, right? I mean, you guys are the Syracuse law and order deep chamber, a lot of people identify as part of Syracuse, they don't necessarily live in Syracuse, so I think there's an opportunity where people can come together and work as a community, not just the town of Syracuse, so we welcome that opportunity.
Hey, that's a financial weakness.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
I mean, I think we all get this as a good idea, right?
You know, I, I think that, uh, of course, my, my background with marketing and, and public relations and those kind of things, an entryway sign could be a real centerpiece of your, your marketing and branding for our community, and that going forward, um, you need to really hang your hat on that, because, uh, being able to promote our community through a branding campaign or, or, uh, having a standardized brand that is Syracuse and the Law and Order community, um, those are all important things as we market ourselves to Slate Automotive and the people who are, are going to be working there and living somewhere. And there are others that, the semiconductor plant, it's, they're trying to attract the, the kind of, the kind of, that's exciting. And there's, there's other industries, Hollywood now has decided they're going to expand and they've been able to acquire more land, so there's going to be more workers coming to Syracuse, and so, uh, you know, those kind of things, keep that in your mind as well as you plan for the future, that, those are all things that need to be addressed, again, talking about smart growth and good growth, so.
Where is Hollywood, where's Hollywood at in?
Well, I, I hope I haven't spoken out of turn, but they, they've come to an agreement with the farmland to the, uh, to the west side of that.
Really?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. I don't know how many people that in, have that impacts their, their employment, uh, I think they're pretty early on in those stages, but I know that they've worked with the family of the lady who's, uh, gone now, and they want to see them expand and grow into that. I think there's like eighty acres there perhaps of her farm, fifty are buildable, and so, I mean, I think that's, that's exciting.
Thank you for that, is there any other questions for, um, Brett? Everybody else?
Yeah, raise some funds, help us out. Really support.
Old business?
Um, yeah. I, I thought that we all pretty much agreed to do whatever needs to happen to pay off the bond and the bank facilities. Didn't we, didn't we agree to do that with some of this money? I mean.
There's been no vote, there's just been some conversation about it, right? That's, I mean, let's, let's have last one, I'll, there.
No, I, I didn't know something had happened, and we had to vote on it this month or something, or we just bring to, as a consensus, they do whatever it takes to get it done.
No.
I don't know with Jay here, do we have to advertise it, do we have to? I know, without Jay here, I don't know if we have to advertise it, if we have what we have to do.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take one of those. I'll take one of those.
Because, I mean, I think we do, do as soon as we can, I mean, the interest rates.
Yeah, the, the money appropriated, one point five million, doesn't take effect no longer.
Right, right.
So it shouldn't happen till then, anyway.
Well, unless we appropriate others.
Right, you could do that, you could try to do this appropriation in December, and go ahead and harbor, you know.
Well, we've got.
I'll take, I'll take with Jay just to make sure we're covering our bases.
Let's just service that, get that done as soon as we can.
Also, probably three and eight or something.
No, they're, they're one point one eight, they're two.
They're two and eight?
Yeah. One water, one way forward.
For every part of our work session. Well, let's, let's just have to do it now, it's only just beginning. I think the interest rates that they have across are really not.
Well, I mean, our, our interest rate's not moving, I mean, it's not changing.
No, I know, but, it's what we pay, isn't changing.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'll take one.
Yeah, let's not wait for whatever, let's get it done.
Can you just email all of us when you, that's like.
On the news stream.
News stream.
I try and email them on my phone, Dave, and they, and then there's attachments and.
Yeah, and you do business.
Um, you know, in the past, it's somehow this practice has expanded, but I even noticed in the paper, the county notes, before anybody applies, managers apply for grants, they get the permission from the council first. So that we know that we're gonna have grants coming out, what our match is gonna be, this is something we want to apply for a grant for anyway. Um, but typically, I mean, somehow it's not happening.
This, this, I mean, I wait for five to here.
Okay, well, I think it might have, in some department grants and stuff, but I mean, I think it needs to come straight to the council first and say, yeah, what's our match gonna be, let's go ahead and, you know what I'm saying, yeah, um, I don't know, do we need a resolution? Can we just give instructions and do that?
Probably, probably a resolution.
Jay's not here.
And my guess is it's gonna be a resolution, but I can take on it as well.
Okay, well, maybe work with Jay and get a resolution, right? I mean, let's, let's just create.
We switched it on that, it's close to.
No, there, is there sort of funding, well, because like, you know, the, the Hartwell grant is five thousand dollars here, that's pretty much given, Jim does the grant, Chad does the grant, that all, all, none of them have come before council before they've applied for it.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, maybe we ought to do.
So you want to say, any, any level of grant?
I think probably grants that require a financial contribution from the town, because the Hartwell grant, there's.
So if there's, if there's, if there's a match requirement, does that pair with the council?
Well, I, I would just say any, because some of the times the grants might change a little bit of policy, it might be something that's your one department, or maybe there's your other departments as well, I can't think of any council that.
Right, right.
I would just say any grants.
A lot of these grants, we don't see until they're due, like, before the next council meets, so, especially the ones that don't require a match.
Yeah.
So you have to act on it, or you lose it.
Yeah, maybe do a straw poll.
What?
Send out a memo, let everybody know, you know, in the contract. I, I, like, like the radio contract and some other things are, you know, best replacements, also that.
I'm fine with it, John. If I hear anything about.
Right, me too.
I have, I have. I just, I'll do whatever else I think.
Okay.
I'm, I get lots in my emails already.
So only if they require some sort of town match, right, maybe, pretty much.
Yeah, I could, I could. In the van, those.
Yeah, no, that's what.
Jay, I'm more than welcome to do, I think so, every month, maybe you could include the different grants, but don't, I mean, you would always know if you had a grant, right?
No. I mean, I mean, she tries to get me off the stage, but I don't know, I may not know about all of them, so.
The ones.
Then, I mean, just, you know, I mean, if you have to apply something, just let it go, I mean, uh, so we know what's going on.
Because there's, there's so many out there that doesn't require a match, it's just, if you get it, you get the money for the project or whatnot, but those are the ones that have the quicker deadlines, and you may be, may not be notified until the first.
Yeah, or just you just send an email, say, hey, I just applied for this.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get, we'll get that figured out.
We can do that.
Those are three things.
Let's make your motion too, Jerry.
I've said it. My motion's taken, I'm there.